Welcome to the July 12, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Superintendent?
Good evening, everyone. Board members, do we have any changes to the agenda for this evening?
No, ma'am.
All right, just a few updates that I have for you. First of all, item 8.12, it references the school year in the subject line, should be shown as 2122, not 2021. And item 10.06 references the Florida Department of Health contract, that's LK070, in the subject line, and the actual contract number should be shown as LK071. Also, a revised HR personnel list was added to item 9.01 today, and you have a copy of that. With no other changes, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, and I recommend approval of the minutes from the Regular School Board Meeting, June 14, 2021, and the Regular School Board Meeting, June 28, 2021.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh.
Tonight, we will be resuming our district spotlight videos, and so tonight, we'll be highlighting our leadership training that took place a few weeks ago, and so we'll turn it over to our tech crew to launch the video.
Every year since I've been here, we have been committed to bringing leaders together to learn. There were two purposes this year, especially after the year that we had in 2020, 21, and so I think the first main purpose is that we get together in a room and we learn together. I think as a learning organization, our commitment to being learners, to serve learners, is really important. One of the fundamental purposes of getting together was to learn, and to learn together in a group and to kind of revisit some things that we had been working on the last four years. The second one was just to get in a room together. We hadn't been in a room together as a big group since last summer, when we spent a couple of days together, and so part of it was just to reconnect to each other. It was a great feeling to be back together in a room with leaders. They were excited to be together and to learn again, and certainly so was I. Day one was a great feeling. So we spent day one just with leaders, district leaders, all district departments, and we really advocate that our whole district is one big collective team, and hence, the theme this year was Team Lake, to kind of revisit that idea that we're a team. So we put everybody in the room, and I think it was important for everybody to hear that message. And I spent some time thinking about what is it that I really wanted leaders to know this year, and I think most of it was just about revisiting some things. I don't think it was time to bring up anything new. We still have a lot of work to do on some of the things that we put into place already the last four years. So I had a theme of kind of, it was kind of a re-theme, so we went back and revisited some things. So we started with reconnecting. Reconnecting, we did some team building, we reconnected to our belief system, we reconnected to our why, and spent some time reflecting on that. Why do we do what we do? Why do we stay? Why do we commit to Lake County and to Lake County students? And certainly, there were some great conversations around that. We then moved to recommitting, and we talked about recommitting to each other and thinking about the work that we've been doing, and we revisited our collective commitments, and thinking about how might they do that with their own staff. And then, we went into rebuilding. And rebuilding talked about kind of rebuilding some of those structures that maybe this last year has been a little bit harder for us, and we've had to do virtually. So thinking about rebuilding collaborative teams, and what might that look like? Rebuilding also the sense of collective efficacy. It was hard for teachers this year to really see their efforts, and especially if they were teaching virtually, like whether or not they were having impact. And so, we talked a lot about how to give good feedback during that section, how to really be specific about their actions and how their actions impact learning, and so we spent some time in that section on that. And then we went into relaunching and thinking about, we made a commitment four years ago of how we wanted our kids to experience learning, so it wasn't just about them being able to learn, but how do we want the experience to look and feel in Lake County? And we developed our common vision for instruction, and part of that is dealing with making sure kids know exactly what they're supposed to learn, so thinking about the essential standards and how are we gonna make sure that kids know what they're supposed to be learning? How do teachers know what they're supposed to be learning? And looking at that in our collaborative planning time, thinking also about how we get back to kids being able to collaborate with each other, have classroom discussions, making sure that kids have a scaffold with each other, making sure teachers understand how to facilitate learning, where the heavy lift is on kids, and then thinking about how we assess that learning, how we know that kids understand and are able to do what we've asked them to learn. And so, that relaunching section, it also talked about collaborative learning time. How do we talk about collaborative planning time with adults, and relaunching that and maybe refining that a bit? And so, we spent some time reflecting on that. So we moved into recovering and thinking about our acceleration and remediation time. If we do have a learning loss, which I don't, I think we've got to wait for the data, the rhetoric of the fact that everybody has a learning loss, I certainly think we'll see a bit of a slide, but I want to be on the proactive side of things and think about the idea that we may not have as big of a slide as we think. And so, the data, we're digging into the data, it's going to drive that for us, and not letting a test in May drive what we do with kids in August and September and October. And so, really using current common formative assessments that teachers have made together, and really refine those assessments, and then based on those essential standards, and then making sure we have opportunities for kids to get remediation and acceleration during the school day. And so, looking at that time again, making sure kids have a walk-to-intervention system where they can go get the help that they need, and the best person possible to be able to deliver that instruction. And so, that's kind of that whole idea of recovering learning, if that's needed. And then, the last section was rebound, and that section really dealt with this idea that it was a hard year. I think that it was important that we acknowledge for all of us, it was a hard year, and that we did really good work. And so, we ended with this video, that there was a poem in a book. It was actually from the book, The Rebound, by Doug Fisher and Nancy Frye, and it was in the front, it was written by a student, and I read it when I opened the book, I got the book to sort of do some planning around this whole day, and the poem just kind of spoke to me. It spoke to me because I just wanted Lake County to know that we really did well in this year of uncertainty. Those structures that we put into place four years ago, we saw come to fruition. We saw collaboration, which has actually been here for years, but we saw people collaborate because we didn't know how to do things. We saw people get together, we saw people decide what is the most important thing we can teach our kids this year, and how we do that. And people really rose to the challenge in every department, and so, I asked every department director, assistant superintendent, the superintendent, all the cabinet members, the executive directors, I asked everybody to do a couple of lines. We ended that first day with that poem, and I think people really appreciated that and felt like we saw them, and we know that it was a tough year, and we're all going to get to this together, and that our job is to rebound. We rebound for ourselves, we rebound for kids. So day one sort of set the stage for the next three days. We have a lot of people who are, who were signed up to go to a PLC Institute last year and the year before, and it got canceled because of COVID. And so, I have really had a goal of making sure that everybody has a good foundational understanding of the PLC process, and what it really looks like to be a learning organization for adults and for kids, and this idea of why we really focused on student learning, but why all that happens because of the adults and professional learning. And so, it was a great opportunity for us to have every administrator, every school, to have a team of teachers come together and kind of be that group of people that leads the work in their schools. So we did a PLC virtual institute, meaning we were in-person doing the work, but the institute actually was brought to us from California. And I have to tell you, for our first time, it went pretty well, and people were very appreciative of it, and I think they sort of understand better about what a real learning organization looks like. That was the next three days. We spent time looking at essential standards, talking about those tenants of the PLC process, looking at how to strengthen our collaborative structures for adults, and looking at what we do with formative assessments, looking at what we do with acceleration or remediation. And so, we built a better shared understanding of the work itself. We left the week with hope and rejuvenation, and I think people are excited about the year ahead, and so, that's a week in a nutshell.
Excellent.
Something unexpected. Something we've never encountered before. Something new to the world. It came quick and fast, with no warning.
Everything's changed. Your life has changed. It won't ever be the same.
We are now lost. What to do next? With no clues, what is the next move?
To stay home, is what we were told. The world is at a standstill while time continues.
Our education must continue. The world in such a panic, but we must continue.
Scared to step outside, but we must continue.
We are the next generation, so we must continue.
Time for something new. Something we're not used to. Something so complicated, yet so simple.
We had to adapt with no other choice.
We met a new way. A new way to find knowledge, a new way to learn.
The only way left to learn, it was not easy. There were many setbacks, many failures, many distractions.
Nothing to keep us motivated but ourselves.
A rough beginning, coming to a peaceful end, although it's not over.
Be proud, though you may not see, though you may not understand.
This moment is a moment to be proud of. Overcoming the challenge, pushing through the rain.
The light just over the horizon. We're almost there.
We had every chance to give up. No one around to tell us this and that. No one around to direct us.
Nobody around to watch. There is no coming back from this moment.
You have now adapted to a new way of learning. You have now adapted to a new way of life. You miss the old way, but this moment has forever helped your future.
See it or not, you are a part of virtual learning. It came unexpectedly, but we picked up right where we left off.
We adapt. We continue. We push through and we make it out.
We are the next generation. We have not failed, we have thrived.
We took this lesson and created a blessing. The setup for failure has become our greatest success.
Entertainers, entrepreneurs, that's what we've become in a short period of time.
With this dark moment, a small light was all we needed to find our path.
They took a shot and missed. We took the rebound and scored.
Outstanding, outstanding. So now, we move into public input. We only have two slips, and they're both professional, so I won't read the public comment statement that I usually have. So Dr. Tibbetts, we'll start with you. Or, excuse me, do you want to wait until 11.01, or do you want to speak now?
I'll wait.
You'll wait? Okay, we'll stand by. Okay. Mr. Sardar?
It's under discussion.
It's under discussion.
Got it.
Mr. Sardar, if you'll give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
David Sardar, Fruitland Park, well, 66, Wintergreen Drive, Fruitland Park, Florida, 34731. Everybody knows I used to work at Leesburg High School, but the people that are watching right now, if they're watching, you know, I've been in a couple parades, and Lou Boogas, the vice mayor, red, white, and blue. People run for office, you, the board, run for office, you take care and pick out the superintendent. My dad, you know, I've been with Senator Backsley a few times lately. I just left his office, the Lady Lake office, today, talked to his hard-working aide, Matt McLean, whose dad is Dan McLean, 32nd District State Rep. I am worried about our kids' future. You know, my dad was a principal. Same school he went to as a child across the street from Great Lakes Navy Base. I go to Tallahassee. There are internships in Tallahassee, and there is a language to learn. I've been with Senator Backsley and Representative Keith Chernow. Fred Hague has called me, Representative 32nd District, my state rep. You know, life goes on. This is a program for a Leesburg Fire Department chaplain that passed away, that went to the Jack Benny Junior High School, Waukegan, Illinois. I apologize, I'm old. You know, you learn from the past to build the future, and I'm talking loud, but we did have a Fourth of July, and everything is new. What time is it? The time is now. I recognize some of the paces in the video we just saw, the Superintendent John Carr was there. You know, I've called John Randolph, or Mike Grant, Mr. Randolph, the principal at Leesburg High School. I don't know why he hasn't called me back. You know, I'm trying to fight drug abuse. I don't know how much time I got left, but I've gone to Tallahassee, and anybody can go there, anybody can come here and public comment, and I wish more people would show up. I was at Wildwood this morning, I just stopped at the Leesburg Commissioners' meeting, I've got your program, but this was more important because our kids' future is more important than anything. You know, we're only here for a short time. People are dying in my senior mobile home park, and some people just don't care. It's my honor to be in front of you folks, I don't know how much more time I have, but you know, tomorrow, there's a Southern County Commissioners' meeting, there's a Lake County Commissioners' meeting in the morning, and I hope more people go to these things. I hope more people would call their senators or representatives, and the school board. There's always public comment, time to talk.
Thanks so much for your time. I appreciate your support for our kids. Okay. Reports? Mrs. Carmen Cullen-Batt?
Chairman, School Board Superintendent, we have received funding from the Monarch Steves and Seaworn Berry Trust in the amount of $6,500 in the past couple of weeks, and it is earmarked for classroom libraries. Red for Ed kicked off on July 1. We have 135 boxes in 37 locations, as well as our online store. The Central Florida Cruisers held a poker run for Red for Ed last Saturday. The totals are not in yet, but last year, from the poker run, they raised almost $3,000. Call Your Financial is doing a shred for Ed on July 30 at Lake Dora Orthopedics, and for a donation of school supplies, the public can shred their documents at no charge. And our final weigh-in is at Wooton Park on Monday, August 2, from 4 to 6. Tomorrow, we're going to be in the warehouse on 561, stuffing 3,000 backpacks, which will then be boxed and sent out based on FTE to our elementary schools. The Salvation Army came in and partnered, the purchase of those backpacks was right at $27,000, and so, the Salvation Army came in and purchased a third of them for us. We will be providing food for our lake launch on July 28, and kicking off the employee-giving campaign. On the 26th of June, we installed our officers for 2021 through 2023. Our president is Joe McLaren, vice president is Lori Baker, secretary Matt Heckler, treasurer Rich Billings, past president James Myers, and executive advisors Margot Odom and Alan Seabrook. We also inducted Judge Terry Neal, Dick Bowersox, Rich Yoder, Scott Blankenship, and posthumously Jerry Miller and Mike Stone into our emeritus board. Stepping out is July 23rd and 24th. We are completely sold out for Saturday night, but we do still have a few seats for Friday night, and our next board meeting is July the 28th, my birthday, at noon. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Superintendent? I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, thank you. We had received all of the evaluations for Part 1 of the superintendent's evaluation and have compiled that information. Our intent is to present it at the next board meeting for final approval. In the meantime, the superintendent and I discussed that she might be able to obtain all the information for Part 2, which is only five different items, as opposed to the 25 that you do for Part 1, and if she gets that information together in time, we will ask you to complete the Part 2 evaluation so that we can have it all done at the next meeting. So, we're looking forward to being able to have that to everybody within the next week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent?
I recommend approval of tonight's consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.06. So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Okay.
Discussion agenda item? So we have one discussion agenda item tonight, is 11.01, and I know that Dr. Tibbetts is going to speak to that item, so as he comes, just a little bit about this revision. This is a required revision that was reviewed by Mr. Johnson, as well as Neola, to our existing school board policy 2215, our program instruction, to align with the newly adopted state rule 6A, which is now addressing some of the newly required instruction, planning, and reporting content that was to be included in the board policy. So it's a matter of taking the amended state board rule and putting it into our policy as required, so that is what is on the agenda tonight.
Dr. Tibbetts?
While he's walking up, Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out to everybody that the item at issue is a tentative approval of revisions to Board Policy 2215 Program of Instruction. And once Mr. Tibbetts is finished, if anybody else wishes to address this, they may come to the podium at that time. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Tibbetts?
Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, Board members. I just wanted to take a moment to share some experiences with you, as you have to adopt this proposal tonight. Thirty-five years ago, working in a small, at the time, 7,000-student college, we had professionals from inner-city Philadelphia come up, and the first thing they did was give the administrators a little mini SAT test to get ready for the influx of a huge number of black students. Going to ask you these questions, write down your answers quickly. What color are bananas? What day of the month does a welfare check arrive? And how much grass is in a nickel bag? There wasn't anybody who knew the correct answer, because if you live in the inner city, the color of a banana is brown. Did anybody know the welfare check? Third Wednesday of the month, a nickel bag had an ounce of grass in it. Knowledge is different for different people. The 1619 Project, if you haven't read it, won a Pulitzer Prize. There were some serious flaws in it, but it won a Pulitzer Prize, saying that we need to look at history a little bit differently than we have been. Your governor and your legislature have made you adhere to the next generation for Sunshine State standards, and benchmarks for excellent student thinking. Guess who made those standards up? There were not a lot of Native Americans, people of color, that put those standards together. We need to understand, as we teach history, Thomas Paine, one of our greatest leaders, when asked, what happened to the Native Americans? Oh, they just died off. We talk about the formation of this country. It was bought, it was fought for. The British fought the Spanish. How about the French? What happened to our indigenous people? What happened to the Seminoles in the state of Florida? Hopefully, you and your teachers can find a way to address the broader issues while staying in compliance with a law that certainly reflects politics more than it does education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tibbetts. Okay, Superintendent?
I'm going to back over to Mr. Johnson.
Go back to Mr. Johnson.
If anyone else this evening that wishes to speak to this particular matter, please come forward to the podium at this time.
Please, come forward. Mr. Sardar?
David Sardar, I gave you my address earlier, do I need to?
Yes, no, no, go ahead.
Okay, David Sardar, you know, I'm from a very ethnic community. All lives matter. There's a lot of interracial marriages, and, you know, there are slaveries around our world right now, and you can't make everybody happy, but history is history. Our forefathers built this on God, and they came from Europe, and we taking God out of while prayer out of schools? And, you know, we need to get back. We're all going to die. I've worked in funeral homes, I do know how to be quiet.
No, why? Sorry, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I got $50 for daytime at 7:5 at night. And I did. People like to die at home in hospice care. One lady died in the same house she was born in. One man was leaning over a chair. We got to face fact. Our country's in trouble. And a lot of people are complaining about everything. But our governor's working his butt off. Our Republican, hey, we are a Republican state. Our state is free. I, the governor's office knows me. I've talked to the governor's office. I, you know, last time I was here, I was just in your land on me. I know Democrats and I know Republicans. And by God, a lot of people are bringing up facts that, hey, we need to work together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent? Or Mr. Johnson, somebody?
Does anybody else wish to speak to this particular matter? Please come forward. I don't see anyone else coming forward, Mr. Chairman, and believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Superintendent?
I recommend tentative approval of revisions to Policy 2215 Program of Instruction.
Board members, you heard the recommendation.
So moved. Second? Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I did.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I need to say something.
Okay, sorry.
Good evening. First of all, Dr. Tibbetts, I've always thought of you as a very wise man. I'd like to express my personal gratitude to you tonight. Wonderful. I thoroughly agree and enjoyed what you said. I need to make a statement. I am first and foremost a sworn constitutional officer. I will always, without a doubt, uphold my responsibility to the taxpayers who saw fit to vote for me. However, I have no problem with following the governor's directive because that's my job, and I will always do that. But, you know, we, as individuals, are a culmination of our entire being. And I have to remind myself, and I'd like to share with you, that I am the granddaughter of great, my great-great-great-grandparents were slaves. I am the same little girl that attended segregated schools until I was in the seventh grade. I am the same little girl who has a very vivid memory of my mother taking me into the local drugstore and attempting to buy me a fountain Coke and being told that those weren't for me, that I needed to take mine in a paper cup, and she needed to take me outside. I am the same little girl who distinctly remember doors in my hometown in Alabama being marked colored and white. I am the same little girl who went to the movie theater and had to sit upstairs rather than beneath. So with that in mind, I will say to you that when this policy passes, as I'm sure it will, and it should, because it is simply fulfilling a direction from the governor. But as for voting on the final one, I will be abstaining because I feel that that's what I have to do to be true to myself as well as to those people who voted to elect me. So thank you. Thank you, sir, for allowing me to speak.
No, thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Anyone else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four out. Extinct. Okay, Superintendent?
We had one letter of condolence sent to Dr. Emily Felton and her family. The board's aware that her mother, Carol Wenzel, passed away last week. The funeral's today. And so our condolences to her and her family. The only other comment I had this evening is we are going to move the budget workshop that we had tentatively scheduled for next Monday to August 2. We'll cover the budget. We will also cover the capital plan at that meeting. I'm sorry, when did you say it was? August 2. That works.
Do we know the time?
That will be the 9:30 time. Unless the board wants to choose otherwise, that it would be the 9:30. Just a reminder, Mr. Ward sent you today an email with some links to his transparency budget website. It has a lot of information, so you can begin reviewing that, gathering your questions. Contact him if you want to schedule an individual meeting with him to review it prior to that tentative budget hearing on the 26th. And then following that, we'll do the workshop before any approval of the budget to follow in September.
Okay, board member comments? Mrs. Luke?
I just had something really quick to say. The Teaching Youth Aviation Chapter is a YouTube, it's not a chapter, it's a YouTube channel that goes around, and they're starting a new series on teaching youth aviation. And they visited the Umatilla Chapter. Mr. Dodd represented the school board there. We're very thankful you were there. We appreciate that. But it was, if you guys didn't have a chance to take a look at the video, it was awesome. There are comments about the programs that we offer to our students and how exceptional they're going to be and how excited they were, and they wish they had the programs when they were in school, and how insightful it was to have it. That opportunity for kids is very uplifting. Scott Blankenship was there at the Umatilla Airport with Dave Cohen, who is the program specialist for aviation. He'll be working at Eustis High School with the aviation program there. They also highlighted the Eastridge and Southlake High School programs as well. So it was really a good video. It was done well, and it was really cool to be highlighted that way. So that's all I have.
Mr. Dodd?
Perhaps I should have gone first. I was going to express my gratitude for the opportunity, for the invitation to go out and see this program in action. I'll tell you, it's really an exciting, exciting thing for the kids. When I showed up and walked into the hangar, I was impressed to see basically an airplane essentially sitting there, well, but is very closely resembling an airplane. I mean, there's still many more pieces that still need to go onto this thing. But to think that their students, our students have built this and that students are now learning, will be learning essentially on the path to be able to fly it is incredible. And I talked to one kid who, since he was six years old, he'd be out in the field playing T-ball. The ball would roll past him, and because he was too busy watching the planes in the sky that he's always dreamed about, about flight, and just been fascinated with airplanes. And now here he is in high school getting the opportunity to build a plane. I mean, that is truly the opportunity to make dreams come true for our kids. I wanted to express my thanks to you as a board member for pushing this so passionately and bringing this to us. And I know there are a lot of pieces that had to go into place to make this happen for our kids. And I got the backstory and all your hard work on that while I had the chance to go out there. And so I can't thank you enough for how hard you worked on making this come true for our kids and for the Lake County students. Because I think we're truly innovative. And this is a moment where you can just be so proud to be part of Lake County and see programs like this.
I'll save it. Thank you. Mrs. Cunningham?
I just want to say that I think, as always, Lake County is rising to the challenge. I'd like to congratulate the superintendent and her staff on the wonderful professional development that was offered for the educated leaders in our district. I think it was very much needed, and I think they enjoyed it. I've heard very positive things from them. I'd also like to say that, as Mr. Dodd said, this is a time that it's very important to be proud, to be a member of Lake County and to be a part of the Lake County School Board. I think we will always be about the work, and we will continue to do good things and make good things happen in the lives of students. And I think that's what it's all about. So thank you for your support.
Mr. Burns?
Also, I was able to attend some of the PLC. And PLC stands for Professional Learning Community. And I just have, I personally, as a scientist, were trained in graduates. Once you enter graduate school, it's not so much classes. It's much more working with, working with people. And my department was, or my, all of Georgia Tech's chemistry department when I was there was, was working on being interdisciplinary and collaborative. And so I went from there to a startup position that was very collaborative. And I've always found that in my work